Welcome to the meeting tonight, hosted by us, Carroll County Commissioners. And we always start our meetings in the courthouse with a pledge of allegiance. And so if you don't mind, I'd like to ask you to join and we'll say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'm sorry there isn't enough TV back here. Last meeting we had like this, we had 20. So, I'd like to introduce who's up here. First of all, Pat Myers is on the end here. She's the county auditor. And she'll be keeping minutes and notes because any time that three of us are together, she has to do that. This is Lauren Hilton, one of the commissioners. Steve Pearson, one of the commissioners. This is Cindy Harmon, who is the attorney for the area plan. And I'm Bill Brown. Now, I'll just give you a little bit of background because our real purpose here is to hear from you, okay? A few meetings back, we had the area plan come to us with changes that they wanted to make in the zoning rules, the area plan rules. Several years ago, the commissioners repassed rules that made it, we thought, tougher for wind turbines to come in, giant wind turbines. Nothing was heard about them quite a while, okay? Then the area plan came to us and they had a new set of rules that they wanted us to pass. Now, according to Indiana statute, the area plan is responsible to come up with changes to the area plan rules, to the zoning rules. And they format them, they have them gone through with their attorney, put it in a tougher form, and then they send them to the commissioners. Changes they make do not take effect as law until the commissioners vote them in, the majority of commissioners. So two of us have to vote it in before it becomes law. We got these that day and did not want to act on them because we wanted to read the whole thing. We're... None of us kind of like Nancy Pelosi where you pass it first and then read it. So we wanted to read them and think about it. And one of the suggestions that came up from one of us, I don't know who it is, we ought to have a meeting or two like this so we could hear from the people of Carroll County. And so this is our second one of doing that. I guess I'd like to just start out with, we had a pretty full house at the last commissioner meeting concerning this. First off, is there anyone here that was at the last meeting? Okay? Yeah, we've got some, I recognize. Come on in, folks, I want you to make sure you get inside. We've got more space up along the edge up here. We want everybody at our meeting we can get. You can't hear me? Not over there. Okay, well, I'm sorry. We'll try to elevate it or I'll talk a little louder here. Now, I would like to see a show of hands of the people who are in favor of having wind turbines in the county. Can you put your hand up if you're in favor of it? Okay? Okay, I saw two, maybe there's more now, I didn't see them. Now, I'd like to put your hand up if you're opposed to have them in the area of the county. Okay. That's following course with exactly... I think we got louder, didn't we? Good. Following course with how it has been, as far as the sentiments toward it. Cindy, do you have anything you'd like to start out with here and tell them about it or you want to just answer the questions when they happen?
I could just give a little background of why we did.
Okay, okay. This is Cindy Harmon, the attorney for the area plan.
Thank you. Just to give you a little background of what we've done in the past and what we are trying to do now.
Stand up.
Even though I stand up, it's not gonna matter. No, no, that's okay. So I've been legal counsel for the area plan commission since 2008. Is that better? Yeah. All right. And then we first passed regulations on wind energy in 2009. And that was adopted November 16th, 2009. Since that time, no changes have been made to it at all. What prompted our need to take action on wind energy and on solar energy was the fact that in the legislative session in 2022, the legislature passed and the governor signed a bill, actually, there were two bills that have to do with solar and wind energy. And what they did is they set up default standards for both of those areas. In other words, if the county doesn't have a standard, it defaults to the state. So it's not something we can just say, "We don't want it and go away." We have to deal with it. So that's what we're trying to do here. And what we're trying to do is make our restrictions stronger than what the states are. Some of this also has to do with how the technology has expanded since we had the original language for wind energy. We've increased the setbacks from what we had before. We're requiring light mitigation, sound mitigation. We're requiring that in order to protect the local governments. We're requiring bonds be issued, surety bonds be required by the developers of either one of the energy systems so that if a company would go default before the entire lifetime of those systems, that the money would be, the bond money would be available then to the county to be able to decommission them properly. So it's not just to protect the citizens of the county, it's also to protect the governmental entities so they don't get hit with additional expenses. Knowing what is fully reasonable, it's hard. I know a lot of people say, "We don't even want them, so why even pass something?" Again, I have to make sure you understand, the state has guidelines, has regulation, default regulations. So if we don't pass anything, they're going to get what the state says, which is a lot less restrictive than what we're asking for. With regard to solar, one example is, with regard to solar, the state's guidelines for setbacks from property lines and road easements, I think was, is... I probably should look that up. I... No, it's not 500. 250 feet from the nearest point of an outer wall of a dwelling. So that might even be right next to your yard, okay? So what we've put, we're asking that be put into place is, and where we came up with this figure is, in Carroll County, hog confinement barns must be at least 800 feet from any other local buildings that are not associated with that. And I don't want to get into that part, I know a lot of people don't like that either. But that was where we came up, we can't just do 200 feet. We did 800 feet from property lines and road easements. So it gives you, it gives more leeway. So that's kind of where we're coming from and what we're trying to do. We're not trying to entice these companies to come in. They're already here. They were here before we even started on it. So we're just trying to put something that's more reasonable into place so that we don't just get sucked with it, with what the state says. So that's where we are. We're not trying to, like I said, we're not trying to entice these projects. They're already, not just here in Carroll County, they're all over the state, starting to come in and all over the country. The government's paying pretty big money to these companies to come in and get these things started because they're trying to have alternative energy options. So I'm not going to give you any opinions on my own where I feel on them. I'm just trying to say, this is what area plan is trying to do to make sure that if projects do come into the county, that they are at least reasonable with the requirements.
Cindy, you stated a couple things, you stated 800 feet from property line, but you also said from the state is 250 feet from the outside wall of the dwelling.
Right.
Are we still property line or outside wall of the dwelling? Because that is way greater than 200.
And to clarify, that was 800 foot from the hog building. That the exact same for this, 800 foot from the house?
Okay, so what we did, what we put in together is, the nearest point on the outer wall of a dwelling located on a non-participating property is at least 800 feet unless waived in writing by a non-participating adjacent property line. So this is not, none of this is installed, like Bill said, what it is up to the commissioners to actually pass something. So changes need to be made and they feel like that is better for the county. I mean, they just send it back to us and we can make those changes and then we submit.
So you guys are over this, right? You guys are the county commissioners, correct? So why don't we just go, okay, anything within 2000 foot of any property line?
Well, I'd like to make it 35 miles. That's what we're trying to ferret out, is what can we do? And our county attorney was unable to be here tonight, but I have asked him to follow the example of some of the other counties around and draw us up a moratorium so we can stop it for a period of time, which will give us time to get our act together on what we can and cannot do. He should bring that to us on Monday. I am personally 100% opposed to these things. I don't want to, I took the advantage of going out to lunch with the two gentlemen who were outselling these to everybody. And by the way, I paid for my own lunch, if you want to know. But I learned a lot of things. One thing is they said they thought they had 64 of these signed up already, is what they thought. Now, I didn't see the contracts, I don't know all the details, that's what they thought. They were very nice young gentlemen. One was from Minnesota and one was from, I forget where else. But they're not from around here, they're not going to be here looking out the window at these things. They're not going to see the flip, 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 flip of the light coming through on them. They're not going to hear the sound of the wind through them. It's not going to be their eagles and other animals that they love getting chopped all up by these things. But they're going to make a significant amount of money by putting this through. So that's why they're here. They just have a different opinion than me. I can tell you, I have spoken to people in Monah or Brookston and on up to Fowler and that area. And what they're finding right now, Carroll County has a very nicely increasing population. Not a huge rush, but it's nicely coming up. People are building nice homes out here in the country. Every time somebody builds a nice home out here and we add that to the tax rules, your tax goes down a little bit. Now, that doesn't mean that I want the whole county built up in houses, but where it's appropriate, where they can put in a nice home, that's great. And at the rate that we're increasing, we're not going to have any panic in the schools or anything like that because of too many people, too many children in the school. So it's very nice. You look up at White County and Benton County where they've just got these by the gods, their populations are going down. Their property values are going down. New people do not want to move in there by these things. They don't want to, they don't. We have a lot of people, I'm from Cutler, okay? So out my way, we have, I'm sorry, we have a lot of people who enjoy building by the Wildcat or in the rougher areas, you know? And they're putting up very nice homes and they enjoy the environment, the quiet, the peacefulness, the serenity of the area. A lot of them are terrified right now because these things, when I mentioned the ones over Fowler to the two gentlemen, they said, "Oh no, those are old technology." That's not what we're going to have. Ours here are going to be twice as tall. I said, you know, it almost nauseates me when I'm driving into Brookston and you go, those lights going like this, I mean, that's the end of the night. And they said, "Oh, well, we've got that fixed too." I said, "Well, how is that?" And they said, "If there is someone aircraft flying over, those lights go off." I can look up at the night sky about any time from where I am in Cutler and either there's one going off that way or there's one coming in this way. We're right on the track to Detroit or Chicago for lots of them. Which means to me, we are going to have those things flashing a lot. Now, I've given you my viewpoint. Steve, do you have something you want to add to that?
I agree 100% with you. I'm not in favor of these things myself, but I'm not a property owner either. I don't want to tell somebody what they can do on their property, but I don't want these things on our county. You know, like Bill said, 35 miles, I want 2000 feet from the county line below them beside the residence.
Well, I'm not for them. I think we're kind of all deceived because they use the term wind farm and solar farms. Those are farms. They're invading our farms. And they're doing it with federal dollars that the federal government does not have. I don't want to be a part of it. Personally, I don't want, but I kind of understand that landlords, and they're thought on it. But long-term, whoever runs that land is not going to own that maybe 40 years from now. And things can change, things can change in a heartbeat. And what these things are made of and long-term maintenance scares me. Somebody sent me the video of Tucker Carlson and probably in his room, and I appreciate it, but I didn't get a chance to dig at the whole thing. But we'll watch it when I get home. And I did think I did see that part, but before, it's on YouTube, but I think everybody needs to see that. And I know if you do sign a contract, you better make darn sure what you're signing because what's to come, you don't know. So you did hear horse doors.
Scott?
Bill, I've got one more question. Would you mind walking us back to the first Scott? I've got obviously more than one question. One is, if you had the last meeting and the statement that setbacks were too stringent, that we could wind up and you folks could wind up and, and they'll, you know, very well may say, "Well, it's got to go back to the state's standards." Is that still correct?
That's what I'm being drawn.
If setbacks or limitations are too stringent, then they could sue us and they'll just revert to the state's...
Is that right, Cindy?
Yeah, they have the ability of doing that.
So we could say 2000 feet from the county line, you know, 35 miles, but you know, it still has to be within some relatively nominal distance, I would assume.
You got another one?
Yeah. I've never been one really to stay quiet too long. I'm sure everyone in this room has recalls in the Green New Deal, was a big buzzword coming out of DC, right? I mean, what was that, four, five, six years ago? You know, all the intelligence in Washington is just a Green New Deal. How many people were excited when they first found out about the Green New Deal? Anybody?
I was, it was good.
You were?
Yes, I was.
Okay. Well, one. And you know, here we are, it's being forced, if you will, into our backyard and down our front. And I'm not a big fan of that. And I don't believe that without the billions upon billions of dollars of government funded, taxpayer funded, government subsidies, I don't think we'd be seeing this. And I, for one, you know, sat on the council from '08 to '12 when the ones in Brookston and Benton County and White County were going in, and they alluded to the idea that we may see our utility rates go down. Has anybody seen their utility rates go down? They've gone up. Why have they gone up? Because they have to get the subsidies somewhere in order to hit them on our backs. That's my opinion, and I think that most commissioners would probably agree with that. So when you look at it from an environmental aspect or from a growth aspect in housing and the county, that's wonderful. Look at it from a financial aspect, and everyone in this room is tired of seeing everything that they purchased go up and up, and I don't think it's going to stop anytime soon. Just a feeling.
Very good point, Scott. Yes.
Paul Reiner, county counsel. I would like to see the commissioners go ahead and take the risk, I guess, to just say, "We're going to fight this." And if we have to, what, I mean, has anybody estimated what the cost could be if the state sues us? Is that what we're up against, the state suing us or what?
Well, we all have to realize that this is, the state and the federal government are against us. For some reason, in my way of thinking and speaking, the Haflicks in Washington have decided we're going to have to have solar everywhere. And my neighbor across the street family has solar all over his barn. Fine, doesn't bother me a bit, and it seems to work for it. I don't see why we have to have these mass things everywhere if every one of you could put enough on your roof to help do your lottery bill. But yes, we are looking at what it would cost, and we have no way of knowing. Now, I'm going to give you more time, and I just want, I have talked to our county attorney, and one of his suggestions is that maybe we might, as we go through the moratorium and look at this whole thing, we may have to engage one of the big legal offices in Indianapolis, that their whole forte is zoning and area plan things. And I'm in favor of fighting it to the end. So if we have to do that... If we have to do that, I don't think there's many of you in here that say, "No, wait, why don't you spend any Carroll County money on that?" Go ahead, please.
That's what I'm agreeing, as taxpayer, go ahead, roll the dice, if they take it for, they take it for, go ahead and, you know, the voice of the people, I think, is telling you, let's let them sue us. You know, we, we in the county, I think we got the right to kind of manage our own affairs in this county. So, you know, maybe they will sue us, right? I mean, that's a gamble we take, you know? I would like to see you guys go ahead and do that.
I appreciate that. You want to speak? You want to speak? I'll get you, Doc, right after the interview.
Is that mic on?
It's on, they just need to get closer to it. He can take it out if he wants.
John DeMar. My question is, one, is how tall are these supposed to be?
600 feet.
600 feet. Has anybody had a tree fall?
Yeah, plus when a blade goes up, it'd be vastly taller than that.
Right. So if anybody's had a tree fall in their yard, you know that the limbs don't just go to the height, they go everywhere, it's a little bit of danger. So I think the 800 feet is small compared to the, compared to the damage. The property line is probably a better way of doing that. And so the other thing is that right now is time when people are worried about their political future. Now's the time to contact them, okay? Our congressman, Jim Baird, pushing carbon sequestration. Our governor, I think, he's going to be gone, and he's the one that's pushing the solar, okay? We need to contact these people, the ones who run for office and want our backing, get a hold of them. If the one, if our state is going to turn against our own local authority, then someone uses it, find somebody else representing that portion of our state.
I think that's an excellent, excellent suggestion. Now, a lady had called me today, asked about petitions, what if we were getting petitions out and around? My opinion is, I'd like to have a phone book this thick of signatures against it, if for nothing else than when we go to court. Or if we get that big of a, if we get a nice bunch of signatures against it, I will promise that I will bundle them up and send them to every one of our representatives and our statehouse people so they get a copy of how the people in Carroll County really treat it. Because we have to, we have to stand together on this and we have to really work on it. And we have to let them know that we vote. So if someone comes around to your door and wants you to sign it, please sign it. If you are so inclined, find out who's passing these and get copies of your own and start them around. Now? Doc Stoffer has a comment here.
Thank you, Bill. My name's Stoffer. I've been a member of the neighborhood community in Delphine for over 50 years. I'm against the windmill, I'm against the windmill, absolutely. But I'm also concerned about the solar farms, the solar panels, and I'd like to ask a question and clarification on what we're talking about tonight. Going to include these solar farms and solar panels, because it's on the best land in the world here, and we don't, I don't want to see it go underneath metal. Thank you.
To answer, Docs, yes, we are talking about both. To answer Doc's, yes, we are talking about both. They put in those darn solar panels everywhere, and that ground's ruined. It's done. Because of all the concrete bases, all the miles of wires, all the electronics, all that stuff, it will never be cleaned up. One of our original, not, I wrote it, but it's one of our things in the area plan book, one of the first things it says is our obligation to protect farmland. And I believe in that, and I think we need to protect our farmland, and this certainly is not protecting our farmland. Now, Doc, I asked our county attorney, and he's drawing up actually two moratoriums, one on solar and one on turbines. And in talking with him, we didn't want to do just one with both of them because we were afraid if something happened, knock one out, we still wanted to fight the other one, okay? So we're gonna be fighting both of those the whole way. Would you mind going over and back to him and then, yeah, go right ahead, sir.
Great, thanks very much. Say, my name is Jeff Rowland, I'm back here, and I just wanted to correct a couple of comments regarding solar. And maybe before doing so, would simply encourage the board, as you consider these issues and as you entertain comments, I would just work to differentiate what we're talking about up front. There've been a number of comments about these things and this and that, you know, without differentiation. And I think it's important that people are obviously, you know, opinionated, and it seems like from somebody inside the industry, that some good dialogue would be helpful. And while this is an opportunity for public comment, you know, it feels more like a planning session for how to stop rather than a session to encourage commentary. So I work with a company that is evaluating solar, including in Carroll County, and let me just give you a little bit of background on some of the reasons for it. And it frankly is independent of whatever comes in the next election. You know, in Indiana, ten years ago, about seventy-five percent of the power came from coal, clean coal. They got coal cleaned up. No, 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 absolutely have. It was a good, it was a good history. You said Indiana's power, none of this power stays in Indiana, is what I understand, is that true? So ten years ago, about seventy-five percent, they told us we had clean coal. That way they don't have clean coal again. I'm not hearing you, I'm sorry. You're not, you're not, you're Mike Ward. I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
It just doesn't sense to me. We're not here to buy solar, okay? We don't need a salesman here.
I'm not suggesting that. What I'm suggesting is if there's information being proposed that is in the